...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start our meeting today with a public forum. This is an opportunity for all citizens present that have an issue that is not a published part of today's agenda. If you would like to come forward and state your name and your address for the record and then whatever comment or concern that you have, the commission does not typically respond to questions during this time, but we can do so through staff or the mayor if need be. So, anyone that would like to, please come forward. Sir?
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Christopher Hernandez.
Mr. Hernandez, is this continuation of last time or the issue from last time?
Uh, yes.
Okay. What we've got is some things prepared from staff.
Okay.
So, as a part of other business...
Now, are you speaking to what I spoke to or what you spoke in the public forum in general?
Um, yes, in the public forum or what you spoke to in the last meeting.
What I spoke to is not what I'm speaking about.
Issues of ordinance, issues of planning, and issues of the departments there.
That would fall into the public forum, sir.
Okay. So, we're going to have that as part of other business because we've got some staff report to give to you as well during that time.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, sir? Thank you. Is there any other citizens here that would like to come forward with an issue? Okay, seeing none, today we have no awards and proclamations, so that'll move us into public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, Public Hearing and Report on Petition Number 4351, requesting the vacation of the west 70 feet of the 20-foot east-west utility easement located 520 feet north of Magnolia Road on Lot 1, Block 1 of the Magnolia Hills addition. Sub-Item 5.1A, First Reading Ordinance Number 12-10,666.
I'll open this public hearing and ask Ms. Tasker to come forward and present for us.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The First Covenant Church is located to the east of Magnolia Road and, I'm sorry, to the north of Magnolia Road and to the east of Markley Road. And currently, they're proposing an 18,000-square-foot building addition at this site. Okay. And a part of this addition included a canopy on the east side of the building for entrance into the proposed building, and it was discovered during plan review that this canopy fell on top of an existing fire hydrant that's located about at this location and had a six-inch lead line that tied into the main water line at this location. And we have confirmed that by a field survey, and for that reason, the First Covenant Church has filed this petition requesting that the utility easement be vacated to allow the proposed canopy to be constructed. And as you well know, the city code prohibits any building or portion of a building from being located within a public easement. And what's proposed is to vacate the 70-foot portion of the easement on the west side and to retain a small portion of the easement where the fire hydrant is located. But basically, this would vacate the easement under the canopy and allow them to move forward with their proposed project. All utility providers were contacted about this vacation request, and no other utility providers have service lines within this easement. Therefore, no utility providers object to this easement vacation. Public utility easements are in place for the protection of utility lines installed by Public and franchise utilities. The easement in question no longer serves a public purpose. Therefore, staff would recommend that Petition Number 4351 filed by the First Covenant Church be approved and that the west 70 feet of the subject easement be ordered to be vacated. This would be carried out by approval of Ordinance Number 12-10,666. I would be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Ms. Tasker, I'm a member of that church, and I believe on the plans that we saw, they moved the fire hydrant from where you pointed out or the intended new location then is...
That is correct.
Quite a bit further to the east, and that's what allows it to be vacated?
Yeah, this existing fire hydrant was relocated down to this location here and that portion of the easement to be retained.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff? Thank you. Any public comment on this issue? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we adopt Ordinance Number 12-1066. Allowing the vacation of the west 70 feet, I'm sorry, yeah, vacation of the west 70 feet of a 20-foot, 20-feet east-west utility easement located 520 feet north of Magnolia Road on Lot 1, Block 1 of the Magnolia Hills addition to the City of Salina, Celine County, Kansas.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve Ordinance Number 12-10666 on first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries 5-0. And now move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, Approve the Minutes of November 5, 2012.
And may we approve the consent agenda as is?
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Today, we have no development business, so that moves us into administration.
Item 8.1, Second Reading Ordinance Number 12-10,665, levying sign of business improvement District Number 1 service fees for 2013.
This was, ordinance was passed on first reading on November the 5th, 2012. Since that time, no comments have been received. Do we have any further questions or any public comment on this ordinance today? Seeing none, I bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we approve on second reading, Ordinance Number 12-10,665, levying sign of business improvement District 1 service fees for 2013.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve on second reading, Ordinance Number 12-10, 665. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Angel?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Commissioner Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Jennings?
Aye.
That motion carries 5-0.
Item 8.2, Resolution Number 126944, adopting findings of facts and conclusions of law in denying application SP 12-1, requesting approval of a wireless communication facility in Indian Rock Park.
Background on this issue, Mr. Andrews, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The attached ordinance here has been prepared for your consideration to see if it captures your basis of your decision you made on November 5th. It was developed by your legal counsel, Mr. Bengston, with my assistance to try to record in writing your reasons for the decision. The Federal Telecommunications Act requires that any decisions related to such a facility be in writing, and Mr. Bengston felt that the resolution was the best format. So, if I refer you to the bottom of Page 1 and top of Page 2, you indicated that the proposed flagpole height and flag size would have an adverse audio or noise effect and visual effect on Indian Rock Park, and the location and size of the fenced-in area could damage the park's naturalistic environment. You found that the proposed flagpole height was out of scale with the park setting and that Indian Rock is a historically significant area, which is not a suitable location for wireless communication facilities. If you believe that that reflects your basis of your decision on the 5th, then you should adopt the attached resolution. If there's anything you feel has been left out, you should bring that to staff and the city attorney's attention.
Is there any questions for staff at this time? Thank you, Mr. Andrews.
Thank you.
Is there any comment from the public on this issue? Seeing none, I bring it back to the commission for discussion and action.
Mayor, I move that we pass Resolution 12-6944.
Second? We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 12-6944. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Item 8.3, Authorize the Purchase of a GPS Survey Rover for the Utilities Department.
Ms. Tasker?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The Utility Department currently provides in-house design for many infrastructure projects. Some would be the water main replacement and our wastewater system enhancements. Currently, the department utilizes either the city surveyor or we send staff out to the site, and they take hand notes and gather the information and then bring that back and put that on the design drawings. The GPS Survey Rover allows us to quickly take that data, bring it back to the office, and download it onto our design drawings. It greatly saves us many, many man-hours and would also free up the city surveyor for other types of tasks. We would also use this equipment to, during construction, to obtain as-built information, and it would be automatically downloaded to the city's GIS system. The city currently uses Leica survey equipment and software. We evaluated Trimble equipment, but were unable to determine that the Trimble equipment would work with the Leica equipment that we have. Therefore, we have a sole source quote from Laser Specialty Incorporated in the amount of $11,075. A budget allocation of $14,000 for the purchase of the GPS Survey Rover is included in the 2012 capital improvement under the category of vehicles and equipment. Staff recommends that the City Commission authorize the purchase of the GPS Rover from Laser Specialties Incorporated from Olathe in an amount of $11,075. Be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions of staff on this issue? Thank you. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to staff, back to the commission for discussion and action.
Mayor, I move that we authorize the purchase of the GPS Survey Rover for the Utility Department in the amount of $11,075 from Laser Specialists Incorporated.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to authorize the purchase of the GPS Survey Rover for the Utility Department. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Item 8.4, Resolution Number 126946, authorizing the city manager to renew the agreement with Lincoln Financial Group for life insurance services.
Ms. Fisher?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. What you have before you is a proposal to renew our current life insurance benefits. Three years ago, we went out to bid and received quotes from 14 providers, and Lincoln Financial was our low bid at that time. When contacted about a renewal, which was up for renewal January 1st, 2013, they did offer to extend the current rates for the next two years. We've been very pleased. Unfortunately, we have had a few claims over the past few years with them. We've been pleased with their customer service, and they have expedited the claims very quickly and have been very good to work with. So, you know, our recommendation would be to go ahead and accept that renewal. There are some other alternatives, if you so direct us, we'll look into those.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and action.
I move we approve item Resolution Number 12-6946 and authorize the staff to renew agreement with Lincoln Financial Group.
Second?
The motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 12-6946, providing authorization to the city manager to renew the agreement with Lincoln Financial Group for life insurance services. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Now, at this point in time, I need to capture the attention of Mr. Bengston.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Capture.
Sorry.
In light of moving the item to other business, can other business be pulled ahead of the executive session out of courtesy for the citizens that are here?
Certainly.
Okay. Does that take a motion?
I would think that you could simply, with the consent of your fellow commissioners, move to other business in anticipation of considering the other later.
Okay. So, with the consent of the commission, I would propose that we move into other business at this point in time, having the executive session to close our meeting.
Yes.
Okay. We now move into other business. Mr. Hernandez, would you like to come back forward? Sorry for that delay.
All right. Actually, I was going to speak on conflict of interest and how it affected the creation of the signed ordinance being amended, because as you mentioned, you wanted to research the item. I didn't know if staff had an opportunity to do that from the previous hearing, and so I went ahead and did some research on it as well. Basically, speaking of specific documents within the Kansas Statute 754031A, which applies to the governmental ethics applicable to local governmental subdivisions, the definition states that several members of the Planning Commission have a substantial interest. Now, number one, basically, the Planning Commission qualifies as a governmental subdivision as they receive and or hold public money or funds. Number two, the Planning Commissioners qualify as local governmental officers because they're appointed by you, the mayor, or the previous mayor, excuse me, Ms. Angel. And then, number two, two planning commissioners qualify that they have substantial interests. At the state statute level, one is in regards to that they own signs and own sign company, and they own more than 5% of that business. It was quoted in the January 17, 2012 minutes with the following. Mr. Mike Sell said that his sign company received at least one request a month for signage at a school or other public type use, so he would not be supportive of a case-by-case review and would rather see specific requirements for the public use districts. The other planning, excuse me, the other planning commissioner was aware of his substantial interests and recognizes, I would say from time to time, he has a conflict of interests. Now, since substantial interest is applicable to both these individuals, conflict of interest then turns to our city bylaws. By the City Commission bylaws, last amended December 3, 1997, the planning commissioners that have substantial interest, or in our bylaws, we call it a financial interest, as noted in Article 3, Section 4, "A member of the planning commission shall not participate in any proceeding or action when the member has a recognizable interest in the outcome or the proceeding or the action." Now, that member has the option of disclosing their conflict of interest, or another member may bring it up, allowing a majority vote to take place to determine if the individual does have a conflict of interest. If there is a conflict of interest on any item on the agenda, it is voluntary to vacate, excuse me, voluntarily vacate their seat, and they leave the meeting room before the agenda item is discussed. What I felt that from the previous hearing that was brought up by other individuals, there might, there was some discussion of disclosure, they had the option to not disclose it themselves, or they could do this, it was really up to them. I went down to the end of the bylaws. At the very bottom in Article, excuse me, Article 9, parliamentary authority, "The rules contained in Robert's Rules of Orderly Newly Revised shall govern the commission in all cases which are applicable and which are not inconsistent." Now, that's kind of a double negative, so as I would teach my students, it would be consistent with these bylaws. When I pulled up Robert's Rules of Orderly Newly Revised, I went to see if Robert's Rules were consistent with our bylaws. In Robert's Rules Regarding Conflict of Interest, found in the 11th Edition, Page 407, Lines 21 through 31, the rule is that he should not vote, whereas in our bylaws, it says "shall not vote," on such a motion or be compelled to vote on such a motion. Unfortunately, this invalidates Robert's Rules to apply to the planning commission bylaws due to the inconsistency. Therefore, the current laws of conflict that we have in place as our bylaws, as well as the state statutes, must be upheld. That's all I have.
Okay. Let me ask one question.
Yes, sir.
Just so that we have a matter of understanding, is the nature of the complaint on the outcome of the action, on the effect of the outcome of the action, or just general procedural?
Well, to be honest, since I got involved in May, originally, I started learning about mistakes, procedural errors. And I, when I went to the June 5th hearing, honestly, they said they never did anything wrong. It was right, they were right, they were right. My mom attended, excuse me, Mrs. Hernandez attended the 19th hearing and was basically struck down as well. So, we thought to go to city manager gauge and was heard. He heard, and he even mentioned in the last hearing that they did start the process over. Now, what we continue to bring up is that there were still errors, and the errors that we are speaking to are the ordinances that were created in regards to the signs that were attached after the public use district was created, though it was talked a great deal about before the public use was created. So, I guess in answer to your question, it would deal with the ordinance, but that does have an effect on the public use district because the public use district originally started out as an educational facility district. And then kind of went back and forth. In fact, at one point in time, as I've gone back through minutes, they even lost themselves. They had to go send staff to find back, because it's always be a continued discussion, and once a continued discussion, it's a continued discussion of an application. So, the application is still being heard, but just by whoever's present at that time. And to be honest, I honestly was not aware of anything until I got the letter, starting on May 15th, for that June 5th hearing. And so, that's where I started putting pieces together and would like all outcomes to be within the laws that we've created.
Okay.
Does that answer your question fairly enough? Or am I still being abstract?
I'm interpreting, no, I'm interpreting procedural then.
Okay.
There wasn't a particular outcome that created a jeopardy situation or anything as far as a voter action, but rather it's procedural.
I do feel...
In trying to sort through what was, what was the offense or what's the grievance.
I understand, okay. I understand, okay. Thank you. The biggest thing is I honestly didn't feel like I was heard at all at the planning commission when I attended. In fact, I was laughed out, and I knew nothing, just because I was a common citizen. Now, granted, I did bring up due process, so that would make any person that does a lot of work as volunteers that way. However, I didn't feel that there was a lot of respect during that first hearing, because I did a lot of work. I went to a lot of people to try to learn, and honestly, what I learned was that with the public use, even while it was exploring the procedural, it was learning more about the public use district itself and how it was still metamorphosing as it was going on. And it was kind of all collaborating at once, and the move to have so many permissions and to cutting the public out except for conditional uses, I think is ultimately going to take away checks and balances, and that's going to place a lot more hardship on the planning commission and the city commission. And I definitely, I mean, I've read many minutes, and you guys have done outstanding work, and there's other times, though, that there's been slippage. And so, if we take away that checks and balances, which is the citizens', that won't happen anymore at the planning commission, so the only opportunity any citizen really would to speak is on conditional uses, as I'm to understand it, and also at the public forum, but they would already have to be aware of how to get that information.
Okay.
Does that answer it more clearly?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, you know, to, I guess I'm not apologizing for anybody or their actions, because I wasn't there and I didn't see, but in hearing you say that you were treated down and laughed at, if that being the case, I personally would like to tell you that I'm sorry that you felt that way.
Well, thank you very much.
And that was an occurrence in that, because we wouldn't want that of any citizen in the community.
Well, but that's unfortunately happened several times. I mean, and one I deserved, and I apologize to you guys because of what happened when I owned the radio show, when it was declined. I thought that the city would want it to reach a larger audience. You guys had already gone above and beyond by meeting the signage, but I really felt that if this was going to be a comprehensive change of all the schools across the entire city, that getting it out in a radio form could be done. Anyway, in retrospect, what I would have done differently if I had the opportunity was to be go on and just, it was basically to say, hey, even though there's a mess-up for the October 2nd hearing, this is really what we're talking about, and this is how you can get involved, as to get the public involved. It didn't end up that way, because I went on by myself, and as the email stands to you guys, and what I did last hearing is I apologized. But the biggest thing is I just feel like, while the public isn't necessarily taking the opportunity to present itself at the hearings, I think another question we need to ask ourselves as we enter this new phase of technology, why aren't we trying to reach them in different ways? For example, it has on the items on your website, you can go there to see what's on there. For example, tonight's agenda was available. It hasn't been available on the planning commission. So, why aren't we using Twitter? Why aren't we using Facebook? Why aren't we using some of those methods to reach the citizens in the new way they communicate if we're going to make such a big change? And if it was just one school, like I suggested, just go for the four high schools, because that was the main concern from what I had read from lots of the minutes. Not to say that it wasn't one at the middle schools as well, but that was, I think, just do four and allow that four, so you're not overwhelming yourselves, so everything can be done by the process, the procedure can be followed, and then the citizens can then have more of an opportunity to get involved in something, because basically, that's how I got involved. I got a letter and started learning.
Good. Okay.
Any questions?
No. Well, any questions?
No, just maybe make him aware that we have, in fact, at our last strategic planning meeting, we discussed Facebook, Twitter, and a lot of different social media, just trying to regulate what's the best way to do it. I mean, it's easy for the average citizen just to sign on board and get going, but the city probably a little slower process, but we are looking at doing that, and I don't think there's a commissioner up here who doesn't have any interest in getting the public more involved. We'd love that.
Well, ultimately, that's what I'm saying, is if, once we make this decision, once we open this, implement the public use district, really, there won't be any need to get the citizens involved, except at the public forum level, because all decisions were made at the zoning planning commission. And what I was trying to identify was that there are errors, and citizens can find those errors and can choose to give up their time and come and speak on that, and should not be spoke badly of or dismissed completely, which is what did happen.
Yep. And one of the, one of the good benefits that you're kind of pointing out with the use district type of tool, when those are in certain areas of the towns and there is a permit that's filed, that's when you typically do definitely get a lot of citizenry involved, because it's, they're looking at each use and each change within the own flavor of this part of the community versus this part of the community, and it's a good tool from those regards, because it does get more involvement out of the citizens. So, I think that'll work as well for what you're, what you're talking about, getting more citizens engaged.
I definitely agree. I just don't feel that 700 notification letters, which still include parts of the city, as it's supposed to, I mean, it's all legal, but I guess the question is, is it... But I guess the question is, is it right to do this kind of comprehensive change and not really go to the ends to, I mean, you've done everything legally, but there's still so few people that know it and honestly understand it. I mean, I spoke to a group and quasi judicial, I mentioned the quasi judicial, I just went boom. So I said zoning.
Yeah.
Okay. Your land is going to remain the same, but it's just going to have a new title, and then that's what's going to happen across the street from you. So I mean, when you had to simplify it that way, nobody that's received the letters, they're at the point, they've had three, that they're confused. And I definitely feel that, I don't know, I just, we have so many, we have thousands of citizens. And if we are going to create such a new district citywide, because it's more than just the public EF, it's the public PF, and it's the public expo. And that's the whole city. And so it would just be phase one, and I really would still like the public to be able to be involved with what you're talking about, Mr. Halsutter, of communication. Otherwise, there's really, I mean, you can do that, have it on the website, but we're only going to be able to show up right here during this time in other business and public forum, and nothing at the city planning commission level.
Okay. Super. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Ms. Hernandez, did you have, please come on up, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, commissioners. My name's Sandra Hernandez. I live at 1940 Starlight Drive. I believe you're asking a specific question, Mr. Mayor, having to do with the conflict of interest. And the information that I was able to obtain and through research is that there was amendment change that was being done to Article 10, which has to do with the signs, that is directly related to one of the planning commission members. The first time the vote went through on the amendment of the article of the signs, it passed without a quorum, that was determined. Then it was, it went through again. And the second time it passed, it passed, except for it passed with the voting or the vote of the member of the planning commission that does sell signs and does own more than 5% of a company. So in the specifics of what you're asking, I think that's one of the incidents I would bring before the commission is that should that amendment change have been made if that member was in direct conflict of interest due to the fact that he did sell signs and he mentioned directly that he gets so many sign offers within the school districts as well as in public use. The other thing that I wanted to mention was I have personal concern that the public is being taken out of the picture of holding the commissioners, not specifically you, I'm talking with the planning commission and the staff, holding them accountable whenever a process goes into quasi judicial. Because when we do find that there are errors and the errors are pretty serious, that we cannot speak directly to the commission because we don't have the opportunity for public forum. The other thing is, is my concern is if all these properties are, how can I say, if all the properties that are being considered for rezoning into the public use district do in fact go into the public use district, that again takes the public out of the picture because there's going to be a lot less notifications through the permitted uses. There won't be any notifications when it comes to permitted uses. There will not be any publication in the newspaper to notify of a hearing because there wouldn't have to be a hearing. So my concern is if the public is going to be involved in these processes and have an opportunity as citizens of Salina to come forward and be a part of these decision-making opportunities for improvements in the future, don't take the public out of it. Let us be a part of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, staff, last week, we had requested that Mr. Binkston and Mr. Gage look into any of these issues that were brought out last week. And some of these, you might have heard some more information or further reinforcement, but if there's anything that you wish to speak of. I know that the last issue that Ms. Hernandez talked about, quasi judicial, for those that are listening at home, that's always a tough one because people are so used to contacting commission members with concerns and hey, what's going on and questions. And those are the only time when we wear a judge hat to rule over a matter versus vote on a matter. And those are always on an appeal-type basis that come to us. So as commissioners, it's difficult too because it causes us to completely operate in a different way. And sometimes, as we heard disclosure from the Indian Rock issue, there were a couple of people that talked before you even knew that it was quasi judicial, people asked questions. So we're all, those are all very difficult ones when they go quasi judicial to handle procedurally. But I'll turn it over to our city manager and attorney for any additional comments or findings.
Thank you, mayor. I have got a couple of comments, and then we'll have Mr. Binkston address the substantial interest question or conflict of interest, which you'll find state law does determine and define for you what that substantial interest really means. And Mr. Scragg will briefly update you on the complaint that was brought by the Hernandezes just, I guess, last week, related to some issue that had to do with paving standards. There are a lot of things talked about, and I won't hit them all, but just a couple of things real quick. And one has to do with citizen involvement. First of all, as you mentioned, when you're in a quasi judicial situation, you're in a position like a judge. And if you go upstairs in a district court for any type of process there, citizenry nor do attorneys get to go back and make those decisions with the judge. So that's just to be sure, that puts you in that role, is to be sure that you can, in essence, adjudicate that particular matter. And so you're very correct in how you stated that. It does not in any way inhibit citizen involvement because there's still public hearings, citizens still get involved. That's the quasi judicial action that would be in close, or deliberation that would be in closed session is just a deliberation. That's it. So the public still has a full opportunity ahead of time in the public hearing setting to make their opinions be known. I think that's very important. Also, with the zoning action, there's two aspects that are sort of involved in the public educational zoning. One's the establishment of the zone. And the establishment of the zone, we call that a text amendment, where you're just modifying what's in the code. And when we do that, we wouldn't typically send a letter because we don't have an application. So we don't typically send letters out to individual property owners. But we do notices in the paper and so forth and try to reach out. And as Commissioner Householder mentioned, we've talked a little bit about Facebook and Twitter, and those are nice tools. But what we've seen in most cities is the absorption rate into the public is not very high yet. So there's a time we're going to be into those. But if you would look at those and say, wow, we're going to get great participation from this point on, probably not going to happen. You'd be a little disappointed with that. But I do think that it will find their place with a lot of actions fairly soon. So we have the text amendment where we do notices to the general public. I think the difference, though, is when there's an application where someone has a property and they want to modify the zoning of that property, could be from a commercial to residential or whatever it is. When that happens, as you mentioned, is when we do also send the letters out to those that are in the neighborhood. Because generally speaking, those are typically, not always, but typically the most interested. Now, there certainly are exceptions to that. So again, in that case, there's public input opportunities as well for you and for the planning commission and their role. So I think it's real important for the public to understand those various processes. And quite honestly, I think we've been as successful as any city of when there's an issue that truly affects somebody and stirs them up a little bit, they show up. When it doesn't really bother them too much, they don't show up. I don't think it matters the time of day. I think we have a general amount of complacency that we all have. We have it with what we do. Something that doesn't interest us, we won't show up for it. If it does, we will. And we see that. And government is always trying to find ways and tools and means to get people interested. Sometimes they're helpful, sometimes they're not, but you keep trying things and hopefully you find something that works. So anyway, I wanted to cover a couple of those little minor issues. And go ahead and turn it over. I don't know who drew the, who had the heads or tails. Who wanted to go first here?
As far as the topic at hand is, Mr. Binkston's all deferential.
Conflict. We'll go ahead and address the conflict of interest question, substantial interest, and Mr. Binkston can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor, commissioners. If I may follow with a question related to the quasi judicial aspect, that is a difficult one sometimes, but it certainly does, in the final analysis, actually enhance the opportunity for public awareness in terms of being sure that anything that planning commissioners or this commission, in making those decisions, the information you have is known, it's in front of everyone, it's in front of all of you, and avoids any situation where one of you might have been confronted by someone and possibly dealing with different information. And if I may, I did have a question. I'd like to direct to Mrs. Hernandez, if I may. I gathered that there was a sense of inaccessibility to the commissioners as a result of that being in the quasi judicial process. And that's what I didn't understand because if anything, I would think there would be enhanced access in the public hearing setting. The only prohibitions would be individual one-on-one communications. Did I, and I just wondered if there was a misunderstanding possibly of what the parameters were of communications with the commission when they are in that role.
Yeah, I felt that.
Probably need to be up there.
Thank you for the question. I felt within the quasi judicial process, from what I understand, is that I'm not allowed to approach any of the commissioners and ask any of the commissioners any questions nor present any concerns that I would have. Is that not correct?
Well, I think the distinction you've made is the key distinction. If you called one of the commissioners and said, hey, I'd like to come out to your place and tell you these problems or these concerns relative to this quasi judicial matter, they, I would expect, would say that that is not advisable to have that sort of individual one-on-one conversation that my colleagues don't have the opportunity to hear. That's why the same communication can occur as long as it's at that lectern, rather than at the grocery store or one of their homes or wherever else. That's the key, is that so the world knows what the question is and the world knows what the answer is or that the commissioners have the same information.
So with the quasi judicial, if you would explain it to me, if I were to come to a city commission meeting, I would be allowed to speak on the topics that is within that process, that quasi judicial process? I could speak at a forum to the commissioners about it?
Certainly, that is the emphasized point of communication, whether it be public hearing or any time that these bodies are convened and hearing matters that are generally, as you probably have ascertained, it's any time that they are making factual determinations and applying those factual determinations to particular law. That could be on an appeal, that could be quite often, as we are dealing with it here in a zoning situation, where we're dealing with a specific site where they're making factual determinations relating to that site and applying the zoning code to it. That's when we're in that, they're jury and judge in that role because they're, much like a jury, making determinations of fact and much like a judge, applying those factual findings to the law. That's where the quasi judicial reference comes from. And classic example is this situation we're in with the interjection of the text change, of the text amendment, where we're in that legislative process. But certainly, at anywhere along that process where any of those bodies are actually considering the matter, that is certainly, the idea is that we want all input occurring at that time so that everybody knows what is being said and considered by the commissioners.
Can I add one thing to that, Mr. Binkston?
Certainly.
I think it's also important, when we're in that quasi judicial role, there's usually two competing sides. One person wants X to happen, another party wants A to happen. If you're for one side or the other and you're contacting us saying you have this huge list of concerns, and the other party doesn't have the same opportunity to know what your concerns are and say, well, I've already addressed them, or here's what we're doing to fix them, it puts that other person at a clear disadvantage in the hearing when we have contact from you with all your concerns and your problems with it, and the other party doesn't even know we've talked to you. And if everyone is here in the open meeting and your only contact with us is when the other party is also here, then the other, not only the five of us, but the other party has an opportunity to hear what your concerns are, what your problems are, and can then address what you've just told us.
But how does that affect when the other party is actually the staff and you're able to go into executive sessions, or I'm not sure what the term is, but you're able to confer with them that were not able to confer with you?
Mr. Binkston.
Well, I'll be back. I'm going to go get some law books. I was trying to pull it up until my iPad died.
It's a miracle.
It's a very good question.
It's a very good question. It's been asked, and it has even been addressed by the Salina County District Court. The applicant, when the commission was hearing the application for the rezoning of the Goodwill Store, that variation was raised and determined by the district court. We felt confident that we knew the answer, and that is, in fact, when, by statute, as you look at the commission's obligation and case law confirms this, that the staff's recommendation is recognized as something that the city commission should at least take into consideration. And we are viewed as a resource of the commission as they do their work. And in that context, that is the basis for having that opportunity. Now, I hope you will find that as we do that, and in that quasi judicial context, and this is going to be, I wish this were more simple, and it's not that I'm sure everyone can understand it, I just hope I can explain it fairly concisely. Two things can happen in this setting if it's a quasi judicial matter that's under consideration, and maybe you've observed this as we've gone through this. There are times where there might very well be a question that comes up, a legal question, where there needs to be a privileged communication between me as the legal counsel and the city commission. And hopefully, we're careful in that situation of making sure that it's clear that that is an attorney-client privileged executive session, and we try to use those as narrowly as possible. There is the other scenario, and it's not an executive session, it is simply a closed session where also, under the open records, I mean, sorry, the open meetings law, there's recognition that when in the quasi judicial role, it is necessary, much like a jury, as I'm sure everyone can appreciate, there's a reason that from the juries deliberate privately. Now, this is good old Salina, Kansas, and this body fortunately is not accustomed, and none of our bodies are that accustomed, to dealing with matters other than out here in the public. So we certainly try to defer that way, and we recognize that. We've had that planned discussion with the planning commission, and I expect that to be, whether the city commission's thought as well, that any time we can deal with it out here, we'll do so. But there is the opportunity where if there is that situation where the commissioners just need to have the chance to say, you know, frankly, I don't think that person was truthful in their testimony. And that can happen. That's the role they're in. They have to weigh the evidence, determine what the factual findings are, and sometimes that requires doing that in private. When that occurs, we will consciously try to keep that to a minimum. I have on occasion asked for other staff members to join us as a resource. Frankly, if it's something I don't think I can remember as accurately as the commission might wish, we've done that. But we'll do that, any time that occurs, we'll use staff as sparingly as possible. And they don't necessarily have to have me in there under those circumstances, but usually I'm in a role of trying to assist them whenever they're making those findings. So I hope I haven't gone on too long about that, but that's the, those are the circumstances where, yes, there are limited circumstances where I'll have to admit that staff and legal counsel do have access. Now, I have to be, I assure you, and I hope I don't ever violate this, if you ever hear me sounding like I'm trying to persuade them- me sounding like I'm trying to persuade them on a policy question, then I'm way outside my bounds. That's what this very capable staff is charged with doing, is assisting commission on policy matters. If I go there, I'm outside my bounds and my job is strictly to try to address legal matters that would affect their deliberations.
Although there are times we wish he would. Often.
Just a couple of quick notes, too. Kind of putting this into a different perspective, we're very fortunate, our, my opinion, our commissioners and our boards and committees do a very good job of trying to be equitable and are not influenced by those special interests out there. But if we take the same context, you put it into a large city in America, I won't pick on one, but there are those that pop through people's minds where you hear about stuff going on all the time. If we were in that scenario, the citizenry would beg them to apply a quasi judicial approach in order to make sure that everyone gets the same information and individuals aren't influenced by those with power and resources in the community. And that's really what, that's the main thing it's for. The other thing is, is because of that, if they don't apply themselves properly in those situations and a decision goes forward and there's a party that wants to, in essence, appeal that decision in a legal context to the courts, they risk that their decision could be overturned and then at that point they wasted their time and harmed the reputation of the community. So that's another reason they want to follow that process.
Well, in my mind, it still sounds like that it's not balanced, that you, you know, that the city planning commission and the staff are allowed to confer more with the city commission themselves in a quasi judicial process. I could be wrong about that, but that's how it is, you know, that's how I see it in my mind, is that, I think that there's, if there's one thing that I think might be clear is that I did not have to wait until the process went into a legislative process, is that correct, before I could speak on any agenda that's in quasi judicial, before the city commission? Or is the only reason I'm allowed to speak right now on the heirs, on the conflict of interest, on any, anything that my son and I brought forward through this rezoning process, I felt that I was being told I cannot speak to the city commission because of that. Now, you're telling me that I could come to any public forum and speak on whatever agenda it is that is in quasi judicial?
Well, I'll answer that this way. I think it's getting back to the question that the mayor first asked. If you were speaking about a particular case-
Mm-hmm.
-and trying to affect the commission's deliberations and ultimate determination on that case, then I think we have to be careful to be sure that, yes, this would have been the best place-
In legislator-
Circumstance, well, no, I'm, if there's a quasi judicial matter pending and it's before the commission, certainly this is the best time and place to address any concerns relative to that. Now, if you were trying to affect a particular case and just happened to decide, this was the day that it was convenient, I'm not saying this is what you did, I'm just saying, if you were just to decide on any given Monday to appear and try to address that particular case, that would not have been a helpful situation. We wouldn't have wanted to try to set that up in a way that you could address that appropriately. But I'm not-
So I'm gonna have to put that on the city commission agenda, is that correct?
I would add to, I would add that whenever we have a citizen that would come forward and state that they have a pending matter, okay, with the city, then we would defer that to instruct staff to look into and advise, and I'm assuming that if it was an issue that was coming down the road quasi judicial, that the recommendation from staff at that point in time would be, that's an item that's getting worked up to put on a future agenda as soon as it can be prepared. And then we would be in jeopardy of the process if it was deemed in quasi judicial to just open up a hearing essentially early by allowing people to come multiple times. So if we can discern it and it's an issue that we're going to handle down the road, then the best and fair course of action is to say that we're setting an agenda for that item down the road and please come back with those comments and address them to the commission on the day of the hearing, on that, on the day of the quasi judicial hearing. Does that answer the question?
Yes, somewhat it does. Somewhat it does. I think the problem that I'm having is that I've gone to the city about the heirs, I've gone to various staff members about the heirs, and I felt like the only, the last place I could go was to the city commission, which is like the government board here, the overriding government board, and bring that because we are speaking directly about the staff and the city planning commission. So I had no other place to go but to the city commission, and because it was quasi judicial, it makes it a very delicate time to even speak about those issues. So I wouldn't even know how to begin to handle something like that. So that's why I came to the forum and brought it before the city commission. And I really hope, because this entire rezoning process hangs in the balance on the heirs being corrected, on laws being followed, and not having amendments passed, and maybe perhaps they shouldn't have been passed, and pushing through a process that seems to be very quickly, I understand that, without making sure that those things have already been accounted for.
Okay. That opened up from a question that you asked, and I wanna make sure that you got the question answered and then continue.
Yeah.
I'd probably let that go a lot longer than what you had-
Well, no, I appreciate it. That whole quasi judicial legislative distinction is one that is helpful, I think, to discuss any opportunity we have if that's hopefully clarifying things for votes. Back to the question at hand, I did have opportunity to, well, I listened to the tape of your last meeting again to make sure that I, hopefully was addressing Mrs. Hernandez's question, and went back to the minutes of the planning commission in which the action in question was acted upon. And as you all may or may not recall from the question, this had to do with the consideration by the planning commission of the sign regulations within the public use district. I, of course, had the benefit of looking at this in retrospect as far as Mr. Mikezel's circumstance in particular. And I, I will say, in terms of his particular situation, and he is very conscious of this matter of when there could possibly be a conflict of interest, he and I have had conversations usually relative to his wife's employer in that they sometimes have matters and we've addressed those. An interesting fact, circumstance, actually, Mr. Mikezel does have an ownership interest in the, in a sign company. It, by my understanding, is an interest that would constitute a substantial interest in that sign company. It happens to operate out of Belleville. And that has been generally known by anyone involved with the planning commission's work. In fact, Mr. Mikezel is one of our two county resident members of the planning commission. He actually resides in Salina County, north of Salina, and as I say, his business is in Belleville. I couldn't have told you this before the question was raised, but I understand that in the last three years, there have basically been two permits issued in all of Salina for any signs sold by his company, and one happened to be a business that was located here in Salina but whose home, place of business is Concordia, which is why there was that And I mention all this because I would, if, I have the benefit, as I say, of hindsight, if, I believe if I had, if the circumstances had been described to me, Mr. Mikezel's circumstances, his business being in Concordia, their virtually nonexistent business activity here in Salina, I didn't ask him directly. I would understand, and maybe Mr. Andrew can help me here, I would understand any of his reference to those signs as being in other communities, not necessarily Salina. We also had the aspect of the sign regulations that were in question were not granting any unique or new rights in this particular zone. What was at issue was basically taking your residential sign regulations and bringing them into that newly established public use zone. I go into all of that because if simply asked the question, if I were, I think if I were back then and posed with a question, I would have suggested that I did not think that Mr. Mikezel's interest rose to the level of the recognizable financial interest referred to in the planning commission bylaws. And I go through all that for another reason, and I think Mr. Hernandez has brought out a point that does cause us to recognize a need to address possibly a, well, something we need to clarify, I think. And that is, I appreciated understanding and certainly I think Mr. Hernandez's research on applicable state law was right on. It's correct in terms of the substantial interest and I, my understanding is that Mr. Mikezel's interest in his sign company would fall within the definition of substantial interest. Now, the key is, under state law, and I'll look to Mr. Hernandez to make sure that, I don't know if he had the chance to look at this particular aspect, under state law, if you have that substantial interest, the means of addressing it is disclosure. Now, you can abstain if you wish, but you satisfy the statutory requirement by disclosing that substantial interest and then acting on whatever the measure is. Unless that involves the direct making of a contract. In that case, one cannot participate if they have a substantial interest in the party with whom the public entity is contracting directly. If the city were buying a sign and Mr. Mikezel attempted to sell the city a sign, now, and that obviously would take him being a city commissioner for that to be an issue, but if it happened to be a city commissioner who had a substantial interest in a sign company and the city wanted to buy a sign, that city commissioner could not participate in the approval of that contract. But that's the only time that one under state law is required to abstain. So we have that aspect at work. Now, granted, and where the, a little bit of clash comes and I think we need to address it. I had not in my own mind, and I think, I don't want to put words in Mr. Hernandez's mouth, but as I understood his account, he was equating, for these, for purposes of this discussion, the state law substantial interest with recognizable financial interest. And one could make that argument. Now, I have to admit that as, when I had analyzed it, that recognizable financial interest in the context of these bylaws and the prohibition against participating in the vote as being the outcome, I have to acknowledge that in my own mind, that was a little higher test than the substantial interest as a matter of state law where it simply said you had to disclose that and if you disclosed it, you could participate. I think we need to address that and make clear, the substantial interest test and the abstention as the means of remedying it is reflected in your rules and it's reflected in the rules that you adopted for other boards and commissions generally. I think we would do well to resolve that, there's a little bit of clash there. Then I think Mr. Hernandez's point, if you equate the two, there's some clash there.
And I would agree with that because in Salina Downtown Inc., you have downtown business owners, and in Arts and Humanities, you probably have studio gallery owners, and across the boards, from what I'm hearing you say based upon what Mr. Hernandez said, you intentionally bring people upon boards that have knowledge within the areas of those boards as resources. So there would be an issue to do something through clarification. Because I think, in my opinion, I think state law does it the matter of saying, we're gonna have governesses and boards, we may have, you know, a mayor that owns a forklift company and every time a forklift is voted on, there's sheperty. So I think they clarified that by saying the contractee, where the money's flowing to in the matter being voted on, is the root thing to be looked at, so.
And even at the state law level, if it is a public bid contract, you do not have to abstain. So anyway, I think it does certainly identify a matter that needs to be addressed. Now, I realize, as interesting as that might be, it still gets back to that particular The vote was five, well, there were six members of the planning commission present. Planning Commissioner Kennedy abstaining, certainly his role in relation to USD 305, I assume is what prompted that. So the vote was five to zero. If Mr. Mikezel had, well, even if you assume for purposes of discussion that he did have a conflict of interest, that simply disqualifies his vote and would have led to, had he abstained, the vote would have been four to zero to two, or two abstentions. So you would have still had the affirmative recommendation of the planning commission. And as we know, that is a recommendation, it is brought to you, and it is your responsibility to address whether it is actually adopted or not. And that is what occurred. So it would seem that the outcome was not affected by the circumstance, and I don't mean that that means we don't care. It, as I say, that part of the problem with that recognizable financial interest is the lack of a more specific definition. I think the whole question has raised recognition that we would do well to eliminate that bit of clash in the bylaws with reference to that undefined term.
A question for you, Mr. Binxton, and that is-
Certainly.
You're saying that if the vote was, Mr. Mikezel's vote was retracted because of a conflict of interest, that four members would have legally been able to have that amendment pass? Because that would not have been a quorum then. Because if there's nine members, when there had to be five votes?
Or address.
Or address.
The abstentions do not affect the status of the quorum. You still have a quorum.
In other words, the quorum is required to conduct the meeting in the first place.
Right.
If we had three, we could conduct the meeting, and that's what you're referring to. There were enough to represent the quorum to conduct the meeting, and it doesn't affect each individual item vote.
Right. You had a quorum, there were six members of the nine-member board present. You had a quorum, there were six members of the nine-member board present. A participating member having to abstain or choosing to abstain for whatever reason does not negate the status of the quorum. You still have a meeting and a quorum in order to conduct that meeting.
Why the first time was there not a quorum? Why was it brought back to vote on again when the first time they said they did not have a quorum, that they realized, Mr. Andrew, can you address that, that there was not a quorum and it had to go through again?
I'm speculating that I assume they had less than the majority of the body present. That is what would be necessary to establish a quorum at the commencement of the meeting in order to even convene the meeting.
So quorum is the number of members and you count the members whether or not they have to abstain or not, even though they're not able to vote?
Right. I think, if it's helpful, you think of the meeting, the quorum relates to the meeting in general. You, you have to have a quorum to convene and if you lose your quorum, if somebody just has to leave, it's possible that you can lose your quorum during a meeting and not be able to continue business. But on an item-by-item basis, you still have your quorum of participating members, it just happens that on occasion, one or more may have to abstain. And if they abstain, they, they don't vote, they don't, in effect, they're a negative, they're a no vote as a practical matter. But it doesn't disqualify your quorum.
Is it present?
They haven't, they're still present and participating to the extent that they can, they just, on that particular item, for whatever circumstance, either choose or cannot vote. So you maintain your quorum and then you're looking at a majority of those present as being the determining vote.
Okay. Thank you.
So any, anything else, or we're, Mr. Schreger? If we're ready to move to the paving topic, that was the second question, second issue that was raised at last Monday's City Commission meeting. And I believe you, City Commissioners, were copied in on the email correspondence between myself and Mr. Hernandez, but for the purposes of the public and giving them some background, I felt it would be appropriate to give a brief background. The question at hand relates to Section 42, 552, subsection E, subsection two of the city code as it relates to surfacing requirements of off-street parking. And there's a little bit of background, prior to that issue being brought up at the Planning Commission meeting in 2006, staff had discussed what the Planning Commission had been tasked with the responsibility of conducting a review of the parking standards. And that related to dimensional requirements and parking standards in addition to just the paving. Prior to completing that, an issue came up as it related to actual pavement surfacing requirements, and that's what necessitated consideration by the Planning Commission. So staff prepared a report to the Planning Commission specifically addressing the issue of what constituted acceptable paving material. And I would tell you that within that subsection that I mentioned, there were actually three topics covered. One was what was acceptable paving material, concrete, at the time, it said that surfaces shall be paved with asphalt, concrete, or other permanent material of comparable performance, without elaborating on what would constitute that other material. The second topic that was covered was a grandfathering provision acknowledging that there are existing gravel parking lots and buildings and uses with existing gravel parking lots had certain recognitions as being grandfathered in. And then the third topic that was covered in that same section was that paving requirements didn't apply in identified zoning categories, residential primarily. So that's what the ordinance looked like when the issue was raised to the Planning Commission. At the time, staff reported, acknowledged the fact that there was a comprehensive, a review and contemplation of a comprehensive set of design standards underway and actually indicated that they believed that any proposed changes to the zoning ordinance should be considered simultaneously with the adoption of a comprehensive set of design standards, but went on to say that however, in the case of the section dealing with surfacing, staff believes there's a more immediate need to delete the other permanent material language. And so in advance of completing a comprehensive review, we brought the topic of the paving standard to the Planning Commission. As further indication of the intent at the time, the staff report, both through the Planning Commission and the City Commission, acknowledged that the proposed amendment is intended to clarify that alternate paving materials must be pre-approved and that a design for the alternate material must be submitted to the city engineer for review and approval. The background going along with that is, we'd recently gone through a project where the owner had taken it upon themselves to install what they, in their opinion, believed constituted asphalt, and we had a disagreement about whether it was of comparable performance and it was already on the ground and it was, we recognized it would have been better if that design had been presented to the city engineer for confirmation in advance. Well, in the process of doing that, what was presented to the Planning Commission was proposed language as it related to just the surfacing requirements. There was not a comprehensive rewrite of that entire section addressing the gravel grandfathering as well as the zoning categories. It went forward to the City Commission with those acknowledgements that I read just a minute ago, and that was when it was all compiled into a proposed ordinance. And that ordinance struck, or that language did not include the provision for grandfathering gravel parking. In our estimation, and as we recognized the issue in 2012, that did not appear to be intentional. In fact, the staff report seemed to be calling out the intention at the time as being limited to paving. And so that was brought back to the City Commission in April 2012, and it was reported at that time that that was an unintentional oversight, that gravel parking grandfathering was unintentionally omitted from the draft ordinance that was presented for consideration to the Planning Commission and the City Commission. And so the recommendation was that it be, that language be inserted as it originally existed, and the City Commission at the time chose to do first and second reading as emergency action at that April meeting. Immediately following that meeting, May of that same year, or well, of this year, planning staff took the question of what do we want to do with grandfathering of gravel parking as a policy question back to the Planning Commission. And there was a detailed history about that grandfathering language and some feedback that was received in, I believe, the 90s when, when there was talk about removing the grandfathering. There was not an acknowledgement of the unintentional removal and the reinsertion of that language. Presumably, it was back to where it was by the time it was going to the Planning Commission. Certainly would have been preferable to go ahead and provide that one additional piece of information, but the policy as it existed at the time the Planning Commission was asked to consider it, had the gravel grandfathering back in, and that was the policy question that was put to them. So that's kind of the history that led up to where we are today and how that transpired. It was very deliberate on staff's part in 2012 when we recognized the issue and brought it to the City Commission in terms of what needed to be done. And I think, you know, we tried to accurately report and fairly report, it was an oversight on our part, it was unintentional, and here's how to fix it. So that would be my historical summary in terms of intent and alternate ways to approach it. Mr. Hernandez and I have had email conversation about that, but it was done very deliberately in terms of trying to fix the oversight.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schreger, Mr. Binkston, for bringing the report to us on both of those things. So that would move us now back to our request for executive session.
I move to recess in the executive session for 30 minutes to discuss the legal counsel matters subject to attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in these matters, also for the purpose of discussing matters pertaining to non-elected city personnel for the reason that public discussion of that matter would violate privacy rights of the non-elected personnel involved and reconvene at?
5:55.
5:55.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to move into executive session for personnel and attorney-client for a total time of 30 minutes. It gives us allowance of about three minutes for a short pause before we move into executive session. And then we will reconvene at 5:55. Do we expect any action?
No, we don't.
Okay. We are now in executive session with a short break beforehand.
Wait, sorry. Thank you.
Black.